Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I would like to officially call this morning. This is, uh... This is, uh... A, uh...
Good morning. No, just a vote today.
Just a vote.
Do you want to be first?
Comments first, uh, the public, uh, well, the minutes.
There's a mistake. Our apologies, it appears there's a mistake on the agenda. There's no public hearing today, we can move directly to the minute, thank you.
Okay, uh, good morning, everyone. I wanted to gather his hand and bring us to, uh, bring us to the place of, uh... Excuse me, uh, place that we call, uh, Orders Disorders, Disorders. And, uh... So, uh, for that reason, uh... So as I do, uh, trying to confirm the order of my meeting this morning, uh...
Everything else from here is fine.
Yeah, I should cut that one out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so as I, uh... Excuse me, uh, as I do, uh, I will... So, just to make sure. Okay, so, uh, I'd like to, uh... To, uh, bring us to order by, uh... Initiating approval of the minutes from our, uh, previous meeting, day that, uh, May 30th. So, uh, if at all possible, uh, I certainly will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve. I make a motion that we approve the minutes as, uh...
Can't hear you who talked.
I make a motion that we approve.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, the motion has been, uh, approved and seconded. And, uh... The guards, if you would.
Yes, sir.
Please roll us over and tell us, uh, what our vote is. What the order of the vote is based on, uh, comments, uh, from, uh, the upper, uh, Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Aye.
Ms. Perrier?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye. Uh... We have, uh, one of several resolutions this morning. Oh, I'm sorry, it's a public comment period. Uh, this is a public comment, uh, period. And, uh... I would entertain a motion to, uh... Engage the, uh, meeting and the members there.
Ms. Keisha, did we just...
So, uh...
Uh, we have several comments this morning. Um, we'll start first with the online, um, comment. Uh, we have Javon Bennett with his hand raised. Uh, I am going to unmute Mr. Bennett, he may begin to speak.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Y'all can't hear me?
Yes, we're hearing.
Okay. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In the past, I have scrutinized and condemned various policies, quotes, agendas, and people. Today, I'm going to do the same, however, the reason at this time is to be cognizant of reality. As I quote verbatim from an article WABTV 10 put out last week, Mayor Kenny Alexander said he was unaware of the event that happened at the PNC building, that he will find out what organization is responsible for the turnout. Let's dissect that quote. Being unaware showed the lack of continuity between the City of Norfolk and NRHA. City Council is responsible for appointing the commissioners, yet you guys refuse to communicate with each other, so it will be easier for one another to blame the other if situations like this arise. That is not an organization's fault, that is City Council and Board of Commissioners's fault. How about you guys work together and not work individually? Second, saying you're going to find out who did it sounds threatening. Like there will be repercussions for residents telling residents about an event that NRHA told residents to tell residents about. Make that make sense. Third, and most importantly, instead of trying to blame someone for this turnout, the city in NRHA should take this as a wake-up call and realize that housing is scarce in this city. People were willing to wait hours in the heat just for a chance at housing in Young Terrace, even though the conditions in Young Terrace are deplorable. That should tell you how desperate and downy people are. The city NRHA perpetually hosts events, praying residents don't show up all the time so you can cover yourselves down the line and say, "Well, we had a public event, it's not our fault that nobody showed up." And that is what you guys were relying on this time, but it backfired. Now, everyone is pointing fingers instead of pointing to solutions. NRHA's lack of accountability, awareness, preparation, and transparency seem to be pervasive throughout the sector of Norfolk. And that is magnified by Steve Morales announcing essentially, and in essence, to the demolition of Young's Park in Calvert Square, get the accurate analytics and data from People's First about where all former Tidewater Gardens residents are not even... Are not even presented, not just perplexed, but obsolete. When it comes to the welfare of Norfolk, we are all culpable. NRHA, Board of Commissioners, City Council, Mayor Alexander, and myself, Javon Bennett from New Virginia Majority. Let's all do better. Thank you.
All right.
Good, so, in-person speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Paul Poole, 1049 West 39th Street. Uh, the topic to address is an apology. He's representing the New Virginia Majority. Immediately followed by Ms. Monet Johnson, 208 West 28th Street. Topic to address, housing needs and dashboard, also representing the New Virginia Majority. I will call on the others after these two speakers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just said, uh, I want to apologize. Few days ago, I got a call from a friend that said there was a NRHA town hall meeting at the Crox Center. I hadn't heard anything about it, and you know, I like a good town hall, so I figured let me rush on down there and get to the town hall. Um, as I came in, I saw an awful lot of NRHA staffers. I mean, all various different departments, but I still went on in. I'm sorry, I asked a question. A question which prompted a few calls from the crowd for security, as if they need to throw me out. Um, I was then told that this is a staff meeting, not a town hall meeting, or it's a town hall staff meeting. And it was inappropriate to ask the questions that I did there. And I said, "Okay, thank you," and I walked out. No need for security, not that the Crox Center had security like that. Question was very simple. Are the lease-up events that were canceled this previous week, are there going to be any more? Are they going to be, you know, rescheduled? Now, I'm not sure why that prompted a call for security to ask that question, but look, I know I made a mistake. I didn't have all the complete information about that particular meeting so that when I showed up to it, maybe it was inappropriate. And I don't know about the response, but hey, I'll, I'll take that on me. And I figured, you all understand how planning a meeting and understanding expectations of that meeting can prompt mistakes, given the lease-up event last week that got canceled. The other three out of four sessions got canceled because once you had that many people show up at once, maybe the expectation on how many are going to show up was underestimated. Now, I don't understand that part, but, um, let me give you these really quick. It's past March, there was an update to, uh, the City of Norfolk's strategic housing plan that not only demonstrated the significant need for housing in this city alone, but broke down the reasons for it and broke down the kind of housing crisis we're in the middle of. It's a low-income housing crisis. Norfolk, if you make, if your household makes above $35,000 a year in Norfolk, there are just enough housing units on the commercial market to handle the households that make that much money. Now, if you make less than $35,000, uh, that's where there's a 10,000-unit deficit. So regardless of where anyone chose to advertise that lease-up event, whether it was online or, or on NRHA's site, or very quietly, or however you might normally advertise this kind of thing when it comes to, um, that, the list, there's a need, not to mention it's June, where, you know, everybody is in need of housing, we're shifting in housing. This is like everybody's move time of the year. I, I, I don't understand how, knowing the environment that we're here in this city, and knowing that this is the time of year and everybody's moving, how nobody expected a ton of people to show up when you advertise, "Hey, we can probably get you a place to live within 15 or 20 days, come on down." When that old call was put out, nobody was expecting anybody to show up in mass.
Three minutes, your time is up, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, and, uh, we appreciate the folks' value and, uh...
I hope so.
We do appreciate, uh, you sharing your thoughtful comments. Thank you. Is there another, uh, speaker this morning?
Good morning, Neil.
Good morning.
Monet Johnson, as usual. So I think that we, not just NBM or the NRHAs, but the city as well, needed a true assessment of what the need was across the city. And so I think that taking this event that we had to sort of cancel the second half and cancel the second day, we should take it as an opportunity because we wouldn't have known otherwise. I mean, I think that we should know, but sometimes you got to see things to believe it. Um, and so my concern is not only getting these folks who need homes into homes, but also what does it mean for the folks that we just moved sort of from their homes? I think that we should have a dashboard similar to the dashboard that we had before that we were getting from People's First with information sort of about where people were going, about how many people are actually getting to come back tangibly to whether it be the onsite or the offsite replacement units, because we don't know if those people in line were folks who used to live in Tidewater Gardens and are now seeking housing again. Um, I think that it would mean accountability for everyone involved, including like People's First, knowing where folks, if they know where folks are truly ending up. Um, and I think it shows y'all's desire to want to keep up with and support the residents of Tidewater Gardens if we get something like that tangibly and can sort of read it every month and now. And I'm not necessarily here to badger anybody, but with plans coming up for the other redevelopment of the other communities, uh, it's super important that we know where our first group of people went. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We have two additional speaker, in-person speakers. Our next speaker is Mr. Raytron White, 3149 Kimball Terrace. And his topic to address is Granite Village, immediately followed by Tiara Lassiter. Topic to address, housing crisis, and a group representing a new Virginia majority.
Morning, missionaries and residents and employees. Um, I'm Raytron White, um, the Raytron White. Raytron Lamont White. Um, first of all, uh, two, two topics. First of all, I want to really thank HRV and the committee of the commissioners who allow my kids to venture off for their new, um, prior education in life, um, the 13th year. And, um, HRV has been a part of the last, I think, seven years, has funded us with the other people in the city of Norfolk and people in the, um, in the Commonwealth have, um, done us a great deal. Um, I have some cards, I think I can do half and half. I don't want Amy to get up to do exercising. And, um, I think, oh, here, and these are, these are thank you cards. And I do have, um, the young ladies copying the letters from the kids, um, and I'm going to send it with the, um, ED secretary. We did, did letters and videos, the kids are getting so creative these days. And, um, they're doing that. Um, there's a, there's a book here, and this is a book you can pass. I have some more books for you all to show you all what they did. Um, this year has been really, um, really, um, extraordinary. Uh, we went to VCU, Virginia Union, Virginia State, ODU, Norfolk State, Hampton University, TCC, and Virginia Wesleyan. And out of the, um, eight colleges, um, to our kids, um, one of the young ladies got a scholarship and on mission in sight to every last one of these universities from Granite Village. And she chose a full scholarship to Virginia State University. Amir is in 11th grade, he impressed them so bad, they gave him a scholarship for next year. So if this thing does work, um, I appreciate the ones that did not want us to go and don't want to do this, but thanks all for the ones who did. Um, the ED, I'm telling you, this works. Um, next year, we want to invite you, this year you was just fresh getting in. I want to make sure next year you come and see them. We want to thank you, first of all, and to the board commissioners. Um, the ED came to Norfolk State University, is really a partnership with the School of Business. And, um, thank you for coming. Um, that meant a lot to me, sit there, he integrated and worked with the kids and students, just the whole time. You know, some people come in and go out, but we want to thank you for that and the partnership we really do with the, uh, with the people at the business department. Um, and second of all, um, I'm just excited about, um, where our kids are going. But I have some concerns, and I want to address the board and the ED, uh, this great, uh, institution. Um, we have a, the summer is here, the kids are out. We had about, Granite Village had the highest graduating class in the whole NRHA property. We had about 11 kids to graduate. And today, we're giving them some little, little stuff from my friends and my, and I. We're going to do some for the kids for the seniors graduating. Um, but we have a lot of kids in our neighborhood now, a lot more than we ever had. Um, and there's no agenda for the activities. There's no agenda for the summer program.
That's our time, Mr. White, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you. All right.
...this morning, which is always, uh... I won't say restricted to, but, but certainly, uh, good time is always, uh, a good strategic, or at least, uh, strategy. Fills with, uh, good, uh, housing, uh, strategy. We appreciate both what you do now and what you have done thus far. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Okay.
Good morning. You've got your time, Mr. White. Thanks, dear.
So, good morning, commissioners. Since 2016, Norfolk, Virginia has been in a nationalized housing crisis. Housing crisis refers to acute failures in the housing market at a given place and time. In addition to living in a nine-year housing crisis, we have also had an affordable housing shortage. Housing, housing shortage, a problem of supply and demand. There is not enough housing supply to meet the needs of low-income people. Truthfully, we need at least 10,000 units of affordable slash low-income housing in order to really have a positive impact on the housing crisis. On Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, thousands of people assembled from the Housing Choice Voucher Office to the garage in the back of the NRHA building just for the opportunity to apply for public housing. The large turnout is evidence of thousands of people in Norfolk who make beneath $56,244, which is our current average, uh, median income. Everyone who stood in the line on June 4th is impoverished and struggling. So how could anyone underestimate the housing need, given current housing crisis conditions? We need our leadership and decision-makers to be in touch with the needs of the impoverished and working-class lower class. We need all entities and policymakers to get on one accord with the public and work diligently and collaboratively in order to reduce the mass homelessness in Norfolk, Virginia at quicker rates. We must listen to the large cry out for help, even when no one has said a word. The example is June the 4th, the line. No one could turn a blind eye to the situation any longer. We should not rely on the public being ill-informed in order to conceal the current state of our housing affairs. We must be brave, confront the problem, then work willfully, skillfully, and diligently to assist others hurting, struggling, and trying to survive in everyday life. We must all work together to be the change that we want to see in Norfolk because change is good. So meanwhile, during this housing crisis, I have been advocating to NRHA, to the city, to various other nonprofit organizations about the greatness of the need. People slept outside, closed back, to be here to apply for housing. People caught the first bus, people caught Medicaid rad, people walked several, several miles to be here on that day just to apply for housing. So to not get the opportunity to apply, to get the nod, we are indeed... So to not get the opportunity to apply, to get the nod, we are indeed disappointing and letting down the people who need us the most, who need the services from NRHA the most. I recognize that y'all do do a lot of, you know, charity work, I recognize y'all assist with the mass majority of the affordable housing that we have, but we need more and we can have more. This city has more resources now than it's ever had, period, and we could be able to help the people more. We just gotta work with the city and get on one accord. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we do not have any additional speakers or hand raised, I will check the lobby to ensure we don't have any additional in-person speakers. We do not have any additional in-person speakers at this time.
All right. Now we're back to the resolution.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to apologize in advance because I'm about to use a lot of acronyms. I'm going to use the term RAD, which is Rental Assistance Demonstration. I'm going to use the term PBB, which is Project-Based Vouchers. I'm going to use the term DOT, which is Deed of Trust. I'm going to use the term LITEC, which is Low-Income Housing Tax Credits. I'm going to use the term HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development, parking up, and I'm also going to reference Section eighteen, which is a HUD, HUD Policy, HUD Guides on How We Dispose and Demolish Public Housing. I say all that because what we're here today is we're asking you to approve a resolution for us to, to move forward with a RAD application to HUD in order to support the renovation of our Partraia and Sykes mid-rise senior projects. So first, first and foremost, we're going to put the presentation on what is RAD. Now, we've gone through this before with the board, but this is probably one of the driest, one of the difficult-to-understand programs. It says demonstration, this demonstration has been in effect since early 2013. We have converted over six hundred units to RAD already in our portfolio, so it's somewhat past the demonstration phase, but the name certainly has remained. Next slide, please. So, and this, and this is for, for, for all, but what exactly is RAD? Where did RAD come from? What does it do? In its simplest format or simplest discussion, it's actually, it's just a conversion of units from the Section nine Public Housing Program to the Section eight Project-Based Voucher Program. At its base, that's it, that's what it does. The bigger question is, why do we do RAD? Next slide, please. So we have to do RAD because right now, and RAD is somewhat of a surrender by HUD. And what I mean by that is HUD knows that the amount of operating subsidy and the amount of capital funds aren't sufficient to do major renovations across our portfolio, and this is for all housing authorities. So back in 2013, sort of a little history lesson, back then there was something called sequestration, where the government significantly reduced its, its public housing across the board, all, all, all federal agencies reduced our funding, and that put at risk our operating funds as well as our capital funds. HUD realized that that was untenable for public housing authorities in order to run their properties. They basically were asked to, they tell us, you need X amount of money in order to run your properties, and they were giving us seventy percent of that. And so HUD came up with a program called RAD, Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, because what they have seen is that Congress supports project-based voucher contracts. So that was the basis, and that's where this whole program grew out of. The, the core item at RAD at the time from 2013 to, to really just a few years ago has been that it had to be budget-neutral, and what that meant was, and the graphic in front of you here is basically the, the basis of exactly how RAD works. What they do, they take the operating funds that we get per unit, they take the capital funds that we get per unit, and they combine that into a single half-payment. The rental portion, as you see in, in this graphic, stays the same. The, the public housing resident switches over to the Project-Based Voucher Section eight program using the same income guidelines, thirty percent of your rent, thirty percent of your income goes to rent, and it stays that way. So your, your rent payment under the Section nine program in a RAD conversion stays the same, as it does in, in, going over to the Project-Based Voucher. So the magic of RAD, and I know this is all kind of dry, but just to go through it for everybody, but the magic of RAD was only that they're combining our operating and capital funds, and they're moving, making that into a, a single housing assistance payment. Why is that important? Because right now, under public housing, we, there is an acronym, a deed of trust, DOT, and that DOT remains in first position. And what do banks not like? Anybody in front of them. So in order for us to borrow money and to go after tax credits in order to renovate these units, we needed to remove the deed of trust. This is the method that we do this, a RAD conversion. It allows us to remove the deed of trust, borrow money, go after tax credits, and essentially we're using the capital fund amount that they've now put into as part of the housing assistance payment into the half-contract, and you're using that to help pay back that, that amount of, of money we borrowed in order to do the renovation. So fundamentally, that's what RAD is. It's, it's not some, some core magic, it's still the same amount of funds, and we take the, the units out of one program, one housing assistance program, and move them over to another housing assistance program. Next slide, please. Go another one. One more, kind of covered all that. So the core thing then is, okay, you're doing this, but there's got to be an impact on residents. Will they have to pay more? No. Will they have to sign a new lease? Yes. They're moving to a new program. Will they be displaced? Only temporarily through the renovation program. Under RAD, you have a right to return, and so fundamentally, there, you know, the resident is not being displaced out of the unit. Next slide. All the same requirements that we have for residents under the public housing program carried forward on, for RAD, that all the notices, all the programs, tenant organization, all of that continues. Next slide, please. There is one new benefit that comes in for, for RAD residents. As they switch over to the Project-Based, Project-Based Voucher Program, there's a provision in, in, in the Project-Based Voucher Program that allows residents under, under PBB that after one year, they can say, I, I, I no longer want to live in this, in this property, so I'm raising my hand up, and I want you to give me a voucher. They go to the front of the line on the voucher program, under the Choice Mobility Provision under the PBB program. So that is one new thing that our residents get. Next slide, please. So, under our annual plan, we have the, the, in our, in our plan, the desire to, to move the four mid-rises to the RAD program. So we're in that process with Partraia and Sykes now, and the reason that Partraia and Sykes are first is because we have a major elevator project at each, at each property, that is, we're in, providing additional elevators at those properties, and that gives us an ability under the LITEC or the tax credit program, essentially to take advantage of that project and get additional credit to support the renovations of, of the actual units. So those two, two apartments were selected first on our, on our RAD conversions, so you see up here in our, our timeframes is where we're moving that forward, from now to 2024 through 2027. Next slide, please. So Partraia and Sykes, originally created, built in the 1970s, they have not had a major renovation since for the interior of the unit at that time, so we've assembled a team, architects, as well as a finance team, in order to put together a package where we're, we're going through to a full physical needs assessment, understanding what exactly needs to be replaced in each of the units, as well as the, the common areas and the major mechanical systems. We'll be working with the residents, actually, this month, we have a meeting in both Partraia and Sykes with our architects this month, where we're going over their initial work and getting further resident input. We've had meetings with the residents, actually, originally back in December, January, and in April, where we've got, got their initial thoughts and feedback and discussed the whole program, and so we're going to continue that, that coordination and work with the residents through the entire process. Next slide, please. Again, we know that there will be some relocation. We do, we are doing a comprehensive renovation of the units, and therefore we will have to temporarily, temporarily relocate families. And Albert, we have not started the plan yet, we've still got a while, while we get there, but that is foremost on our, on our thoughts, and actually the act, the action today is going to be a help in, in that, in moving that forward. Next slide, please. So key things, when we want to highlight, and this is, this is somewhat of a, a, you know, what you see when you have a, a drug commercial at night where you see that there's all these disclaimers. So this is a HUD disclaimer thing, and it's actually kind of important. There's no transfer assistance, and what that means is that all the assistance, all the units there are going to remain in, in the program. There'll be no reduction in units. We're not making any changes to the units and bedroom sizes or reducing the number of units in each project, it's going to remain the same as it is, we're just renovating the units. There's, the renovation, we're going to, we're going to, it's a full renovation of the interiors, and what we say about that, we're going to touch everything, ceilings, walls, windows, kitchens, bathrooms, every, everything in, in the unit, so we're going to do a full renovation of each unit. We're also evaluating, we'll have major upgrades to all the mechanical, the plumbing. We definitely want to increase the energy performance of the properties, these were built in the 1970s, they are not very efficient, big cost on, on running the units, and so we're going to do all that we can to enhance that, now again, a better performance for the residents and lower costs for, for running the building. We, we will, a key thing is that we're going to have to create an entity, and this is going to come forth in, in the future to the board, in that, and when we do tax credits, NRHA doesn't actually own the property at that point in time, we settle to a legal entity that we can control, so we just got to have to note that. We're in the midst of the full scope of the, of the renovation work, and we'll be working on that over the next few months, but we are, are moving the project forward. Next slide, please. I have to point this out, sort of, this is the, the part where RAD is somewhat a good program, but HUD also found that it, it was a little bit deficient in the funds necessary. So we're actually going to do a strategy, and this is, this is from HUD, where it's a RAD, and then it's also Section eighteen. I mentioned earlier with Section eighteen demolition disposition, in this case, it's just a disposition side, but the core thing that we're, of the work here is that, that allows us, that allows us to essentially change a portion of the unit through the, just straight to the PBB program and not the RAD program, and that will boost the amount of operating subsidy that we have for the project, and that's being done in order to support a higher level of renovation. Next slide, please. So why are we here today? In order for us to get, to move forward, we need a board resolution to essentially authorize us to, to submit an application for RAD. That kicks off the process with HUD. This gets us in the line for the, the RAD units and conversions. So the resolution today before you is, is that it starts the process. Today is not an immediate conversion to RAD, it's the start of the process for that. We'll be, later this year, we'll come back to you, we'll have a, and more information for the RAD conversion, Section eighteen conversion, as well as moving forward with the LITEC work also. So we are in the initial, initial part of this right now, and we've got a long way to go, but this is a, a critical step that we need now. Next slide. Next slide. Any questions?
Steve.
Steve, thank you for that, your presentation, with all the afternoon.
Ken, here.
Here's my question. When this is done, who owns the property?
The, the property will be owned by a tax credit entity, NRHA will be the controlling member of that entity, but in theory, it'll be controlled by a private, or it will be owned by a private investor with NRHA control.
And does the removal of the deed of trust enable the financing that facilitates this?
Yes, it does. The deed of trust is removed, but a RAD use agreement will be in place on the property.
Will, will the entity, the agency still be responsible for managing the property?
Yes, we will have, we will have the management responsibility, yes.
And how many total units in, in, kind of, in response to the things that came out of the public comment section, how many units does this, does this?
There's eighty-four units at Sykes, and will remain eighty-four units, and one hundred and fourteen at Partraia, and it will remain one hundred and fourteen.
Most of these are the agent line disabled?
These are seniors units.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I just, you can ask, I just wanted to know how many units are being converted? So you said eighty-four, and how many one hundred?
Eighty-four and one fourteen.
Okay, so I just want to definitely just be abreast of the process of when we go through renovation power, moving people around, you know, it's pretty central. I just wanted to know the size, the scope of an amount of people being relocated.
Absolutely.
Would, my question was just, if you just get a broad, not getting into the weeds answer, would these trusts are removed out of these mentions about the banks, and then on the second line about it, do we have arrangements with financing pre-arranged at the time we remove the deed of trust?
Yeah, there'll be a full LITEC deal, as well as investor, as well as loans set as part of the project, so when we actually do the conversion, which would be later next, which would be summer, hopefully next year, all of that will be...
So the contemporaneous?
Yes.
You have to source it, right? So it allows us to start the conversation with equity providers and lenders in terms of various areas, yeah.
Steve, are we anticipating with these renovations that there will be upgrades in the amenities that are available in these units once we're completed?
We're actually, absolutely, we're looking at that right now, a lot of the common area spaces, the architects are looking at a reuse of some of the states and improving those, and that's a core item, working with the residents as well, property management there for the better use of the states, both at Partraia and Sykes.
And both of these multi-story units, you mentioned in your report, elevators that will be improved, and I thought I'd add it as well.
Yes, for both Partraia and Sykes, we have elevator project already underway using capital funds and money from Virginia housing, not, not directly tied to this project yet, but we are adding elevate, three elevators at Partraia, because we have three separate wings, and then renovating the other, the existing three elevators, once those unit elevators up and running, adding another elevator to Sykes, doing the same, upgrading that elevator once it's complete.
Great. If we may have a motion for the resolution, please?
I make a motion that the resolution be approved, voted on.
Do we have a second? Yes, Hurrier, thank you. I'll call the roll. Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Mr. Katsagrande?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to take a short break.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. That was.
I want to start today in terms of addressing the situation last week. And so I'm going to give you the numbers and then I'm going to give you the story, right? And so with the numbers in terms of last week, we had, we accepted about 291 applications, of which 257 have been deemed eligible. And going to be eligible with an asterisk, you know, provided background. And so we already had a number of people to, let me back up even further, right? So part of the focus in terms of the lease event was for two bedrooms at Young Terrace. There was only a few people left in the queue on the waitlist for two bedrooms. And so there was obviously a need to, to kind of get that filled. That waitlist has been open for several years. So that's another piece that I think is very much important to state. And so knowing that, knowing in terms of, and we, we thank everybody who pushed it out on social media. But if you were following social media like I did, you know, there were kind of mixed reactions to even Young Terrace being filled. So I think it was hard for us to really even, you know, anticipate what we got. In terms of that, I recognize that, you know, people did stand out in the heat. And housing is important to folks. I personally saw somebody who was experiencing a medical situation. We were going to contact and we did contact medical professionals to respond. She did not want to get out of line. I mean, that shows the, you know, just the dire situation that sent. So we're continuing to work through the, the applicants that were in the, in the queue. We have 60, the staff is kind of batching in terms of the 257. And so 60 applicants will be full or currently in process. And we'll have a sit down on June 17th. It would be offsite, it'd be at, at Young Terrace, correct? Yes. Okay. Yeah. All right. We're going to say we'll get back to you to clarify. But it is being worked out and so it will be done by a smaller group individuals. So we will go and through the process to make sure that we're occupying the units. And so, you know, the remaining individuals from that will be placed on the appropriate waitlist. So again, we, we were seeking two bedroom households. Actually, we've got more than two bedroom households. So to those individuals who do not qualify for two bedroom households, they will be placed on the appropriate sized waiting list at Young Terrace. So these are the moments where, you know, you, you have to kind of do a self reflection. And so for me, it's really kind of a self reflection in terms of where we are in terms of housing in general, where we are in terms of NRJA as an organization. Housing in general, it is a great need for housing. We are a large housing provider. We have over 8,000 units, some 9,000 units of housing that we provide. We stand to provide more and we are going to be at the forefront in terms of making sure that happens. The other side of that is our communication could be a little bit better. Our coordination could be a little bit better. But these are the things that you learn along the way and we will be better as a result of it. Every person has a bad day, every organization has a bad day. I'm not going to let that, you know, cloud the work that the men and women in this organization do every day. Right? And so I understand that there are people who need housing every day. And so I, I stand with folks who say, hey, you know, let's work and, and fight this fight. And I would say on a couple of different fronts that was already mentioned, we are doing so and preparing to do so. So Mr. Poole came up earlier and talked about, yes, we, we had an all staff meeting. We refer to our all staff meetings as town hall meetings. And so, but that's what every organization should do. We have all staff meetings every month because that's what good organizations do, they communicate. We, because of the size of the organization, we're only able to get together and physically quarterly. So that's what we were doing because it's the end of our fiscal year. And there were a lot of things that were discussed and that's fine. And so there's a charge to the organization, obviously, to do things, to do things better. So I don't mind if somebody is saying that we are moving to, you know, redevelop Calverna Young. It shouldn't be a dirty secret. It should be something that we all strive to do. But there's nothing wrong in terms of the word plan to plan. Because plan to plan means that you're planning to plan, right? So we can talk about all the things that have gone wrong prior, prior, you know, whether it's Hope Six, whether it's Choice Neighborhood, pick your, your HUD program, your favorite HUD program. But we also can take the time to understand what, what it is we've done bad. What can we do better? What can we do differently? And so, and that's what we've been doing for the last several months since I've been here. So I don't care, I, I could care about a lawsuit. I care about the people. I know that at the end of the day, people have their own point of view. I get it. But we can always do better collectively. So our better is that we recognize that there is a new phase of affordable house, new type of units. And we see that, right, in terms of what's happening at Tidewater Gardens. We need to replicate that. We know that there needs to be additional affordable housing. But you know, the one thing we don't talk about, we don't talk about how we move people forward. Because housing is just ability to help you do things, right? So as an organization, I've been very focused in trying to make sure that we have a very strong real estate gang. Because that matters in terms of people who want to fund. But equally, and the board knows and the staff knows as well, I'm very focused on human development. So I've been listening the entire time in whether it's programs for our kids, programs for our seniors, things for workforce, meeting people where they are. So we got to talk about both. We can't talk about the supply if we don't talk about moving people incomes forward. NRJA has a ton of programs and a ton of partnerships to move people forward. We need to talk about that in conjunction with development, right? That's the part that's missing, right? We have a lot of good industries here, a lot of good careers. It is, we have a lot of people who aren't not, who are not just at the low, very extremely low within our portfolio. We have people who are technically self sufficient according to the HUD guidelines. But let's just think about the time we take to criticize one another and the time that we could take to, to lift up one another or lift up a household. So that's what I'm focused on. So I don't mind the plan to plan. Because when you plan to plan, you tend to plan right. You tend to listen and you tend to engage. And the plan to plan isn't, hey, we have a plan to show you. No, it's a fundamental, here are the people who need to be at the table, right? Residents at the table, city leaders at the table, activists at the table, NRJA at the table, state at the table. There's a number of people at the table. Why? Because we want to help the Norfolk at the end of the day. So that's the plan to plan. So if that's a story to somebody, good luck. And maybe it's a slow news day. That might be a big headline for a comment back there. But it might be, it might be a slow news day, seriously. You know what I'm saying? But NRJA is planning to kind of work with individuals to move them forward, both housing, mind, mind, body and spirit. So it doesn't mean that, hey, we didn't mess up. Doesn't mean that we didn't try. It doesn't stop the need for, it doesn't mean that affordable housing is the need in the city. So let's focus on solutions. Let's look at models to improve that because I think that that's where we'll get to. This thing that we don't talk about. I worked at other municipalities. I can tell you what those things are every day. So, but we don't talk about that and we should. So I just want to say that part, we can do better. We are going to do better. But the job that we do every day, it matters. Moving on, because I want to make sure that we are very much transparent in our efforts. We work very hard to, to restore our relationship with the city. And I understand that people see that as a degree of a fracture and that's a major, that's a major component. I've worked in a lot of municipalities. It ain't the first time the municipality and the housing authority has had issues. We won't be the last either. But there are things that we can work on in terms of common goals. And that's housing, people at the end of the day. And so we got to elevate that degree of conversation. As I said, Mr. Poole gave you an example of the housing need study right here. But what you don't know is that we're currently, if not signed already, signed with HRNA to dovetail what our assets are and how they can help, help address the affordable housing crisis in the city of Norfolk. That's real. That's real. So that's, that's, that's leadership. And it's not about my leadership, it's about agency leadership, it's about agency buying. And so that matters because we have assets. We only got so many, to be clear, and we should go after more. I can't tell the board what to do, but, but that's what I'm focused on is making sure we get more assets. Because we have resources. We have resources, we need land and we need coordination. But if you got will and you have some resources to put, you already got skin in the gait. So we're there. So I want people to understand, I don't, and I'm not picking on the people who, who raise their comments because I think they're valid comments. But I want to make sure that it is, it's full and accurate, right? We can spend the time to beat, beat each other up. But the, the HUD funding's been going down since, the PIH has been going down since the Clinton administration. Think about that. So there's a, there's a reason why we need to kind of change and do the things we do. We don't have to leave people in the past, we, we can learn from the past. And I mentioned that before, we could talk about, again, we could talk about other types of things where maybe some bad things did, really did happen. But we don't have to repeat those things, we learn from them. And that's where we are. So to my friend in the back, you my friend. And I'm, I'm with you. I, I've never been against what you guys have been about. I just think that you can just be a little bit better in form. That's no, that's no shade, that's no this, that's no nothing. That's just me saying as a professional, I see where you're coming from, I want to help. So call on me for my help and I'll call on you for yours because I've been listening. So that's not, and that's for anybody else too, who wants to work towards this, this piece. And so as I said before, Steve might have been on the point in terms of the real estate. Julius Norman is probably the other person who's got the Herculean lift because his area, along with everybody else in NRJA, supporting his area is here to uplift our clients. Both public housing, converted properties and housing through the Valtteria. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that we're moving things in a direction. Plan to plan should not be a dirty word. You should, it is a lot of criticisms in government. And I'm hearing plan to plan, it's the first time I'm hearing that that's a dirty word. So we want a plan, we want people to be at the table. We want to talk about things. It shouldn't be used for fundraising gimmicks or whether the way to get people kind of riled up. Because it's not that. Been very thoughtful this.
Especially the people saying that there is no plan. It's definitely.
No, 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 no.
The kind of folks, there's no plan.
I catch you.
Y'all are saying there is.
So I got you. So the plan piece, the plan to plan is to engage, right? I can't properly engage on air. So I need something to start with to be able to say, here's what it is. So they're right in some ways, there's no plan. Why? Because there's no plan being presented to them. There's been no plan being presented to the residents. It's not because there is a plan, because there has to be a plan formulated with a, a large degree of input, including yours and, and the city and others. But we got to know how to approach it, got to know how to have the right conversation. And that's what we're working on. So don't want to take up a whole lot of time. We doing a lot. And we're going to continue to do that because it's very much important. And without other questions, no questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
First of all, Mr. Simms, I want to thank you for kind of keeping the commissioners updated.
Yes.
The contemporaneous.
Sorry for the lady now.
The second thing is we're, we acknowledge Ford and everybody in NRJA that we're dealing with public housing crisis.
Yes.
Anytime that communities are dealing with a crisis, it always raises political temperature.
Correct. Yes.
And you're seeing the passion that comes from, from a consequence of community coming to grips with that crisis.
Absolutely.
You've been in your position now for eight months, during which time you took on a mantle of responsibility for reshaping relationships within the community and, and lines of communication that have been troublesome for decades. And you've done a very good job of addressing those things in, in pretty short order. Along the way, you're finding out where there might be some landmines.
Yeah.
And that's to be expected.
Sure.
And learning about those possibilities is important. But I assure you, you haven't stepped on all the landmines.
Oh, no, I know.
And we're, we're, we are aware that within the leadership of the agency at the level of Ford, of a crisis that has to be addressed, working in conjunction with the city and federal government to try to do it.
Correct.
Hopefully in some sort of speed fashion.
Correct.
And at least for me, I, I want you to know that you have my vote of confidence in what you're, what you're doing in trying to move this process forward.
Thank you.
And I'll just remind you, all of us, we have to stay focused on the big principles.
Absolutely.
Rather than get dragged down into some of the, the swallows that can feed more individuals.
Swallows are always good. And now I don't take, as I said, I, there are more things I agree with than disagree with in terms of different conversations I've had with folks here. And I think everybody kind of knows that. And if you don't, I do, I listen. And whether it's me physically seeing you sitting here or some other means, I'm listening. So I think that part is always important. Things didn't happen overnight. Things aren't going to transform overnight. But I think we have to recognize that there's an opportunity to move people forward. Doesn't mean, moving people forward does not mean to be displaced. It doesn't mean anything negative. It doesn't mean, we got to get the facts, the facts right. We got to focus on what the real challenges are at the end of the day, right? I think that part is important. We need more tools in the toolbox. The housing authority has some tools, but not all the tools. And that's just how municipalities operate. There are other folks who have other tools, we stand to work with them. Because we do want to address homeownership, we do want to address long term rental housing, we do want to help with, with homelessness. We touch into all of those things. We're not the lead agency in all of those things. So we'll continue to work on that.
Do you have any comments or feedback or questions?
Very quickly, just want to tag on to that, that we do, I shouldn't say we, I can't speak out of half everything. Do appreciate communication. So we understand if that's what happens. We also understand where you're coming from.
Yep.
Have a few of my people support as well. As an attorney, I think there's a couple of people in this group who can say that words are important.
Yeah.
We have to be careful with words.
Correct.
Everyone has to be careful with words, especially in such as, as I believe someone stated, when there is a crisis that we're all very aware of and we're all sitting at this table because we care about that crisis.
Yep.
The focus needs to be on the crisis.
Yep.
We need to be careful with our words as well. But ultimately, at the end of the day, our job is to deal with the crisis.
Yep. Where are the interactions? I would agree.
I, I just want to say, I appreciate you leaning into accountability part.
Yeah.
Just by the way, ABC as well. Just by the way, the agency as well too. Uh, and, um, just continuing to give full information, right? I don't, you know, um, I know we've talked about Young Terrace for months in here since I've been here. We've talked about having a hundred vacancies. What are some of our opportunities? I think it's been very transparent about what some of the obstacles were with getting this place potentially built, right? So even when, uh, hearing some of, uh, the commentary this morning, I think, um, people in this room really kind of know the location. I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the, how the, the optics were in reference to the marketing.
Yeah.
Saying that these are only two bedrooms, that, hey, we have a hundred.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know what that language looks like. Um, those are things that we probably wanted to kind of dial into, but to have as many openings as we've had, yet not have any interest and then to go from that to this massive thing. Um, it's hard to tell that story when it's, you know, when, you know.
In another.
Yeah, in another, right? It's hard to say, hey, look, you know, we've had a hundred units, and we've been doing various things to get this thing. And just this one thing that we tried, you know, this one way of marketing actually opened the door to box, you know? Um, and, um, hence the reason I kind of said, uh, I think last meeting as well too. Um, make sure people know the places that they're signing up for. I don't know if a hundred percent of everyone that came out there knew specifically that was Young Terrace.
Yeah.
I don't know, especially when we've had so many vacancies, right? I, you know, that's the thing where we're just, where we're having this, uh, we're having these applications sign up at this random building. Maybe forty, fifty percent of those people don't even know where Young Terrace is. I don't know.
Right.
Right? You know, if so, then they would have been to a leasing office.
Yeah.
You know, in the past. So it's just kind of navigating that, making sure that people clearly understand.
And that's the part, I mean, I think to the communication piece, yes, we, we could have done a much more better job of being very succinct in terms of that. Um, I think even, uh, we, we talked about the technology process, you know, making sure that the online portal is, is available, um, for sure. Uh, and, and it will be, uh, and, you know, for, and for obviously individuals who need reasonable accommodations, they can, you know, we can make arrangements to either come here on site or, or go to Young Terrace directly or any of our other communities for which we're offering. So there, there is those moments where you can kind of point back and say, hey, we can do this better. Um, and so it was a bad day. I swear to do my truth. Uh, and that's no lie. And a lot of people can attest to that. Um, but I think, you know, but again, as we said, it doesn't take away from what the need is. We know that there's a need. Um, and so, you know, two hundred, so, you know, even if we're dealing with two hundred and fifty-seven applicants or a hundred and twenty-three slots, we already know that's not, that's not enough, right? I mean, that's two, I mean, it's, it's not enough for everybody that's there. So, so there's a lot of things that we have to continuously work through. So we, we, we're there. We want to, we want to support in different ways. But that's what I'm saying. You, you, you got to look at it, whole, whole picture, uh, at the end of the day. It has to be a development friendly Norfolk. It has to be a coordinated Norfolk. It has to be, uh, resources at the table Norfolk. Because one agency does not solve a housing crisis. I don't care where you look. And so, but we stand at the table ready to do so. And, and like I said, I'm with you. And so, and I want people to kind of understand that I've never been a adversary. And I would say to anybody else as well, I know people say some really interesting things about this organization. I get it. Um, but it doesn't, it doesn't fix anything. We can always avoid frustration and sometimes we need to, um, it's therapeutic. But at the same time, it does not necessarily solve, uh, a solution. And I want to solve the solution. It's not to say people are yelling or yelling about the wrong thing or that's not me, for me to determine. But if we're talking about housing and housing crisis, uh, I can assure you, NRJ is not the issue. Thank you very much. And Kimberly, you come up?
Thank you. Thank you very much, ED.
And if I might, um, about, yes, thank you. If I might ask that, um, the departmental update could be, uh, brief and overdue. You have excellent reports in the package. Um, and so if you could just maybe touch the highlights for maybe even asking back his question. Thanks.
Good morning again.
Good morning, everyone.
We've had, we're drawing, um, close to our year end, June thirtieth. And, uh, we provided information throughout the year and I've met with the finance committee, subcommittee. And we are working on things to better, um, present items. And, um, we prevented, I mean, presented, uh, financial information through April. And we are moving forward and we are ready to get started on the approved budget. Are there any questions?
No, I just made a comment that we're going to, the finance committee will continue to work. Leadership and keeping tabs on the details of things that are important, things that we need to relate to, relate to the commissioners who go through that.
That's what's going to be my comment is if anyone on the finance committee had anything to add to our slide presentation that they thought was necessary. Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for showing up today for us and being a part of, uh, what we do here and understanding, um, how this all moves. It's not easy. It's very challenging. Uh, the population we serve, very challenging for many reasons. We all show up because we have the heart to serve and it's by choice. And I think that's important to know. Um, it, it gets complicated. We have a lot of moving parts right now as it relates to property management. You know, I'm going to talk about HOPMA again. I know you guys have heard that to death and you should hear it a lot because it's a big deal. And it's some major changes that are being made to the Housing Act of nineteen thirty-seven. The way we've done affordable housing over the years is drastically changing. So the Housing Opportunities Do Modernization Act, HOPMA, as you know, uh, was signed into law in two thousand and sixteen by Barack Obama. So it's been implemented over time and there are three sections of that law that are going to change the way we do business in public housing, our project-based voucher system and our housing choice voucher system. Some of the major changes, just to name a few, because it's, it's a, it's a pretty hefty law. Um, how we calculate rent. It's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna change. Uh, what's considered income? What's considered an asset? Those things are changing. The end of the, uh, EID program, earned income disallowance, it's, it's over. We had to stop offering it in two thou- in December of two thousand and twenty-three, two-year phase out. So we had to stop offering it in December. So it's no more. Um, the elderly allowance, uh, that's always been four hundred dollars. If you know, it's now going to five twenty-five. And if you don't know what that means, it's as an elderly person, four hundred dollars is taken off of your income and your rent is calculated on the reduced amount. So that is changing and that's to the advantage of the people who fall in that category. Because of all this, we have to change our system. So we have to work with our software company. Our IT department is currently doing that to change our system because also it's going to change how we report. To HUD, we use the PIC system currently and they, they have changed that how we report our vacancies, our, our recertification, uh, our inspections. These are all things that we get scored on. So how we report that information on a monthly basis is going to change. So we have to change our software. So that's a, that's a major, major project. And while we're doing that, we're also looking at, um, upgrading our software to something that would work for us better. So we're converting over to YARDI from Elite to YARDI, which is another major project that, um, we are currently working on. We meet a lot about it. It's take, it's gonna not just take IT, it's gonna take a lot of us in our departments to help them convert over to this new way of, um, this new software that we're going to be using. And it's going to be, uh, a lot better for it. Our call center. We actually added Calvert Square to the call center. Um, so we now have Oakleaf and Calvert at our call center. The call center is, is working really well, um, for us to track what we do to make sure we get our work orders closed. Um, it, it's, and we can keep track of the numbers. Um, it's not changing how, how many calls we get, but it's, it's changing how we can keep control over it. Um, we do have staffing issues across the board in property management with our maintenance, um, with our call center. So we have positions posted. Uh, as we try to fill them, we work with temp agencies so that we can get what we need in order to move forward. That's all I have for today. Any, any questions?
And would there be anything, um, to add on from a committee about the public housing? Buying committee report.
Um, from public housing, we did not meet because of, uh, the applicants who came. Um, it was very, very busy. And, uh, but we're on track with, uh,
The next month.
The next month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Good morning again. I'll be for you. Now that y'all know all about RAD. Um, mostly, yeah. Most of that, I, I'll probably just ask for the group for, for questions, but first I did want to address something. Um, so in, in the, in the, uh, question of the plan to plan about Young Terrace and Calvert, um, note that earlier this year, um, there was a meeting with our resident advisory board, includes residents from, from Young Terrace and Calvert. Um, and in that, that's part of our annual plan process. So we've actually been back before this board for the same purposes. And if you go to the annual plan, it's actually in there where we say for FY, FY, you know, twenty twenty-five, then we're going to start the process for the planning for Young Terrace and Calvert. So again, this is not a, not a secret, not a, something we're all been holding. It's actually been part of the agency's plan for a while. We actually go back years, um, before the work on Tidewater. The indication was that this whole area needed to be redeveloped and it includes all three communities, but we were starting with Tidewater Gardens. The planning in front of a redevelopment effort takes time and involves a lot of votes. Um, just, and certainly I don't think it'll be this long, but again, reminders of the board that the original planning on Tidewater Gardens started in two thousand and five. Um, from two thousand and five to two thousand and seventeen, we worked through a, a, a variety of iterations of plans and working with residents, outreach to various stakeholders and groups and went through a number of iterations before we ultimately got to the point to submit for a CNI project. For HOPE six, um, the HOPE six application was in two thousand. The first sort of inclination of when that was going to start was in nineteen ninety-five, was the mayor's commission on, on public housing. And through there, there was fits and starts and different stuff, I'm sorry, different studies that were done before there was a, a move forward. Planning takes time. Um, it involves so many different groups, stakeholders, advocacy groups, residents, city, the authority, a lot of professionals. Um, and it's the right way you move forward. We don't have a plan. We do, in, in, if, if you think of the terms of, do we have a physical plan that shows us exactly what we're going to do at Young Terrace and Calvert? No, that doesn't exist. Do we have a, an intent to plan? Yes, we do. It's in our annual plan and it's, 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 it's something that's been stated for some time. Do we have an intent to create a way forward and a plan? And that would be a physical plan. And as Nathan also pointed out, it will be a social plan. It will be, how do you deal with the residents and work with them through this process because that is actually the harder work. Um, we always say that, you know, to build units, I need three things, just three things. I need land, I need money and I need permission. Working with the residents is much harder. Having residents move back is much harder. We can build units, but it's more, it's more than just building units. A plan is, is intricate. We have to deal with the infrastructure. I mean, this is the, the details, you know, you have to deal with the social component, deal with units and their placement, the density, uh, the number of veterans, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's a lot of work that goes in there and we will be, in, in, in the years coming, we will very, be very thoughtful in moving that forward. That's the appropriate thing to do. Speaking of learning from the past, and Nathan brought that up, I think this is important. So if you go back many years into again, the issue with again was that folks removed that again. They were promised a chance to come back, but there were no real opportunities for them to move back and no resources for them to use to move back. For the Tidewater project, we have real options and opportunities for families to move back. This board, as well as city council, made sure that there was a absolute preference for the families to move back. This board and city council also put into place through our, 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 our plans and our budget process and everything, funding in order to have families come back. That's relocation funding. So move costs, deposits, breakage fees, et cetera. Um, the city council also passed, um, for funding and, and brought in urban strategy, the case management group to work directly with residents to help them through all the processes of the ups and downs of, of dealing with the affordable housing, um, bureaucracies. Um, so from that standpoint, that's where we learned and we're going to take more from what we've done in Tidewater and take that even another step forward and how do we do a better job in working with our families through all these processes? The other thing I want to touch on before I take questions, um, the other thing I want to touch on is there's in advance of everything that we've been doing in, in this agency, um, we absolutely understand that there's been an affordable housing crisis for years. We've struggled with the HUD funding for years. And again, HUD years ago set a standard saying is, here's a, here's a hundred percent, this is what it's going to take to run your properties. And then every year they give just slightly less than that. And in some years, a lot less than that. So they set the standard of what it's going to take to run the properties and then they don't even meet that standard. And that is, that is national policy. Um, so the authority in what we do in order to better promote, you know, uh, housing in advance of large efforts, um, we started a process, you know, years and years ago, again, from this board and from our, our, our folks, uh, um, in, in the agency. You know, step one, Pam's group, we went from a hundred percent ACV standard to a hundred and ten percent. So what's the big deal there? We just expanded the network of, of, of units that are available to our ACV clients where they can rent because we're, we're paying a higher standard. That in itself, without building one new unit, we've just expanded the number of units in the city of Norfolk that our families are able to get to. Another thing that we did again, using the tools that we have, um, we started, uh, years ago, in advance of CNI, um, we started the project-based voucher program, um, in, in, in the authority. It was always there that we could do that, but we hadn't, um, created that, that program within the authority to do. And what, and what that does is that says, private developers, NRHA cannot build all the units that are necessary. But we do have a small tool and that tool is our project-based voucher. And we do know that when you're going for tax credits, that it can get you additional points on your tax credit, uh, application. And that might allow you to win those credits and therefore build those units. So years ago, we created that, you know, added that to our program, added that to our arsenal, our, our tool belt and have been annually putting out project-based voucher RFPs, trying not to use that acronym. And just to note, I'm going to note a few, um, just as I was just listening and thinking, thinking about it. For CNI, you know, we have the Aspire coming, that's starting to lease this month. That was through a PBVRFP. Last year, it was Riverside Station, which is off, uh, military, um, military, uh, trail. Trail, no, all right, thank you. I'm thinking Palm Springs County, Florida. I'm sorry. Um, off military and, um, that is a hundred and twenty units. Um, and we use our PBVRFP to get actually, uh, replacement units out there. But again, not a dollar from NRJ. We're providing the vouchers and then the long-going, ongoing assistance. Prior to that, uh, Market Heights, the Retreat, the, um, Ashton Apartments and St. Paul's Apartments, all of them have project-based vouchers in them. And so what we're doing is trying to expand the amount of affordable housing by using the small nugget of assisted housing with project-based vouchers. But then all the rest of the units in those developments are open to our housing choice voucher clients. So in that sense, we are addressing through the tools that we have the, um, additional affordable housing in the city of Norfolk. And again, I, you know, we're, we're going to continue to do that. I think we're at, been at a hundred and twenty percent standard coming out of COVID. But we keep our, our ACV standard higher and we're going to continue to use PBV. but we keep our, our ACV standard higher and we're going to continue to use PBVRFPs for the foreseeable future as long as we can, because there are limits to what we can do for the HUD, um, regulations. But that is the tools that we look to in order, outside of the agency doing the development itself, that we're going to be doing in order to expand the amount of affordable housing in the city of Norfolk. Um, again, we have few levers. We don't have a lot of resources to get things done. It's very expensive and, you know, to do our projects. I noted with the RAD project, if we were doing that without a, a tax credit and without debt, that's forty to fifty or maybe even sixty million dollars in, in, in renovation costs. We do not get that money annually. We get, you know, really about ten million dollars annually and that's going to be going down over the next few years. Um, and we have to cover all of our properties with that. So if we put all of that in one property in one year, then we cannot do anything else in the other properties. Um, so with that, I just wanted to add context a little more to where we're going and sort of what as an agency, as we globally think when we move forward about this, uh, about affordable housing and how we can improve it. Any questions from, from the development group this month?
Um, the kind of, Steve, the kind of, so you just to kind of explain it out again, you're basically saying, uh, for the project-based vouchers, basically you find developers who have opportunities. You guys, the agency has made, um, a way to be able to penetrate in some of these, that could have been a hundred percent market rate buildings, you're able to get project, you know? So that's the story, right? So, you know, once again, you know, we're, we're, we're talking about our story, about what we're doing to fight against, uh, you know, this affordable housing crisis, right? So you're, you, you know, just to put it out there again, the agency basically is finding developers who are building units, saying, hey, look, can we put ten project-based vouchers of units inside of this building and allow our people to stay in here? It'll give you credit and allow you to be more marketable to banks and finance and things like that. Okay, so you, you believe the people know that, right? The people you represent and the people who, you believe the people know that?
I think it's, it's very esoteric. And so, no, I don't think a, a lot of folks understand that. But I mean, you're talking about with developers. They do, yes. Um, they also understand all the HUD rules and regulations that make them go first. I don't know if I want those. Um, but again, that's why we enhance our, our vouchers to make it worth their while. Um, I think the other aspect, and again, we do appreciate with the advocacy, because the support out in the community, you need those voices to say, we need this to happen. Because there are so many folks that would go, it's, it's NIMBYism, right? Not in my backyard. I don't want that in near me. And that has been a more dominant, and we need more voices to saying is, yes, we do need these. We need to get this housing everywhere.
All right, yeah, but I just wanted to make that clear. I think that, that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm thankful I got to go in.
Corona, Julian.
Commissioner Peria, I heard you. And this will be the shortest, uh, communication that we've had.
Don't make me push on.
You will not, you will not, uh, the updates are in, uh, in, in your packet. I just wanted to actually read something that's, that's very simple. And it says, uh, in the background of the packet, it actually says honoring service providers in communities is essential to recognizing their valuable contributions, dedication and impact on the well-being of residents. It also says with trusted and committed partnerships, NRJ aims to build a more inclusive and supportive environment for all communities. So you have my update. And as we're talking about going forward, it's about partnerships. We can't do it by ourselves. And so with this statement, what we're saying is that we're doing everything in our power to make sure we bring people to the table, to make sure we accomplish our goals of doing the things that we need to do and be right by peoples and also honor what we're here to actually do. Uh, one of the questions, uh, that was asking me, uh, last week was, uh, Commissioner Castagrande was about the numbers. And I looked at the number last week when we talked about, uh, the eight to twelve year, I'm sorry, six to twelve year olds. And that last week, Digstown, Rose Marie Arrington, Digstown Recreation Center was servicing thirty-seven kids at that age. Uh, this year with the kids, I mean, this week with kids being out of school, uh, that number went to fifty-six. And when I ran the number of kids who are of that age group, we're looking at roughly quite a few kids of the age group, over a hundred and so many kids. But then I had to look at it from a different perspective. So this is the piece why I read to you what our goal was, is the partnerships. So I looked at the residual effects that Norfolk redevelopment has and Housing Authority has with their involvement. An example of that would have been, uh, recreation football and basketball. Those kids not necessarily coming into the recreation center. However, they're in the community and we provide support to those kids. We provide support from helping and assisting them to participate in their fees or participating in those programs. We provide support to them and the training and opportunities that those kids have. We provide support to them on the field trips and actually engaging them into tournament fees. We provide support to them with their parents because they're involved in FSS programs. We provide residual so that number that count may not add up in terms of when you see fifty-six kids coming to the center, but the residual is that effect that we have on the family. In addition, when we talk about the importance of partnerships, this is, this is what we need to understand. When we talk about the importance of partnership, we have people all the time ask us for requests to say, can you help us do this? Can you help us do that? We're more than happy to do it because it's our residents. But sometimes people forget that when we do help them, a lot of times people will come and say, look at my kids, look at what they're doing. And they forget the support that comes along with that. So what, what we do, we want to make sure people understand that we think you're doing a fine job. But we want you to understand there shouldn't be any lines on the partnership and the understanding that we're doing all this together. So although you may need that count and you want to count that, is that what you're doing? Just don't forget the wonderful work that we do here at NRJ because the residual effects go far beyond that number that we may report that, uh, actually attends on a particular, particular program. But we're for all kids and they don't have to be from this community or that community. We're for all kids from all communities. And I want to last say this right here, there's been a theme going around, did you know? Did you know that NRJ, we are actually in the business of helping folks? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for following our, thank you for making that point.
So.
Debbie.
I believe that, we have any, um, collapsed committee updates into that? Yes, are we good with that?
I'll quickly say that, uh, we met this week with economic inclusion also.
No, no.
What's up? You had not, um.
No, no. Okay.
We met this week, uh, with economic inclusion. Uh, it was with Mr. Norman, Mr. Clark, um, with Commissioner Alfonso, the executive director, uh, and myself. We are, uh, building a solid foundation, uh, with, uh, the ideas that we have for economic inclusion. We're not trying to rush it, uh, but we're building strong. And, uh, we're coming up, uh, coming closer to our vision and mission statement. And so I'm very, very excited about the direction that we're headed with economic inclusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any commissioner comments?
Um, I'd just like to make, let every, all the commissioners know and remind everybody that the strategic planning retreat is on twenty-eighth of this month. Um, the ad hoc strategic planning committee has been meeting and we've got, um, input from our facilitator, Tag. Um, we have an agenda that's, that's been put together and we're just having, want everybody to come prepared for a, a vigorous working session, um, and be engaged. Um, and we're, we're looking forward to what comes to work product that comes out.
Thank you. I think we're all looking forward to what emerges.
We made a great deal of progress on that.
Absolutely.
Excellent work.
Um, no other comments, then could we please move into closed session?
Motion.
Well done. There's an order to thank, because we appreciate your swift motion. Resolution convening a closed meeting on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Be resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended, the act, discuss the following matters, which are specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred to below. Personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, performance, salaries or resignation of employees of the authority as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the act. May I have a motion?
So move.
Done.
Mr. Phelons.
Hi.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Dr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Conyers.
Hi.
Ms. Chodzinski.
Hi.
Mr. Castagrande.
Hi.
Ms. Peria.
Hi.
Thank you. We are now in closed session. We're going to take a short break.
Very short break.
No discussion of business matters and.
Three minute break.
Three minutes, all right.
Let's stretch out. You have some.
Great. Resolution. Motion.
Great. Resolution certifying a closed meeting on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Be it resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended, the act, discuss the following matters, which are specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred to below. Personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, performance, salaries, or resignation of employees of the authority, as authorized by section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the act. May I have a motion?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Dr. Smith.
Aye.